Disingisos Master Ibrahim from Australia. Tosmaster Billy Satrio from Pekanbaru. Tosmaster Kevin Pan from Tekanbar, Pekanbaru. Disingisos Master Sukiman Saragi from Medan. Disingisos Master Yanike from Danotoba, Tobale. Tosmaster Jennifer Joang from Pekanbaru. Tosmaster Sarah Hai from Pekanbaru. We have many visiting member from Pekanbaru. Tosmaster Boy Henry, Disingisos Master Boy Yanike from Medan. Tosmaster Putu from Black Toba. And Tosmaster Angeline Christina from Jakarta or Cikarang. Thank you for coming and nice to meet you. Okay, we will have a very good meeting today. Because I see many people and I'm happy to see you all. So by clapping my hand three times, I open this meeting officially. Thank you. Okay, today our theme is united in harmony. Usually, we heard or we listen to a statement. Statement, united in diversity, but now we talk about united in harmony. This theme come from Disingisos Master Boy Henry. Maybe we will, he will explain about why you choose this theme later. So thank you so much and do we have any guests? I think Andre Winarta, maybe you come from Pekanbaru, right? Tosmaster Andre? Hello? Yeah, okay, Jennifer Joang say yes. Okay, so we don't have guest today, so I don't need to explain about Tosmaster. So ladies and gentlemen, in Tosmasters meeting, we usually have three sessions. And the first session is table topic session. And before it, before we start the session, I will give this role to General Evaluator, because he will introduce us the role takers today. So General Evaluators. Who is our General Evaluator? Sorry. Tosmaster Herman Hadilukito. Sorry. Okay, this is your turn. I give the control to you. Tosmaster Herman Hadilukito from Bali.
Daisy, don't make a joke. You're invited by you as a GE. You forget my name.
No, I don't forget your name, of course, I just forget your role.
Okay, eh, good day everybody. And this is one of the exciting meeting from Medan first. We have a crowded participant today. And I do my job as GE, General Evaluator. Which is the person will evaluate the meeting from start until the end. And I do my job not alone. And I have some assistant will join with me to lead this meeting. And it's, I will introduce them one by one. For the Ahkant, there is a special angel which join with me. Ahkant, please introduce your, your job. What is Ahkant? Tosmaster Angel, Angel Karamoy?
Thank you so much. So hello, good afternoon, fellow Tosmasters. So my name is Angel. Today, I'm the Ahkant. I'm going to take a note of unnecessary words during the meeting such ah, um, or and repetition words like oke, oke, so, so, well, well, and all words that sounds can be annoying. So I will start the meeting. And then I will, I will start from the beginning of the meeting. And then I will report at the end of the meeting. So back to you.
Who, back to you who? Our GE.
Back to you, our GE.
Herman Hadilukito from Lovinabits Bali. Okay, now there is one of the handsome young man. He is also included of my team today. His job is a bad ballot counter. Still, still, still in single, he is still single, looking for the answer. Okay, now I will introduce his job now as a ballot counter. Also, he is the president of Medan first. Let, let's welcome our ballot counter Tosmaster Ali Gea Bangun.
Okay, thank you, Mister Herman from Bali. Let me introduce myself. I, my name is Ali Bangun Gea. I'm current president. So for this meeting, I will take a role to as ballot counter. So my job is to collect the vote from you at the end of each session. As you choose to be the favorite speaker. So later on, at the end of this meeting, I will introduce who is the favorite table topic speaker, prepared speaker and evaluator. So, eh, back to you, Mister Herman.
Mister Herman Eswar.
From Bali.
Eswar.
You have to mention his name completely.
Oh, Mister Herman.
Herman Hadilukito from Bali. From Lovinabits.
Okay, thank you, Tosmaster Ali, Ali Bangun Gea. I mentioned the other one, Ali Bangun Gea. Okay, thank you. And also, we are lucky in a Tosmaster, we, we can know about our, our speech, how long we need the time. So that is why there is a person will take note for our, our time when we are delivering, deliver our speed. She is as a timer. And please introduce your job. Tosmaster Sherry Shae.
Thank you, our GE. Hello, everyone, good evening. So as like Tosmaster Herman said, I will be your timer. And my role is basically to record your time. And I will, your speech time. And I will show the green, yellow and red card to give indication about your duration. And this is, will be for three session, table topic, prepare speech and evaluation session. I think that's all from me. Back to you, our GE, Tosmaster Herman from Bali.
Okay, thank you, Sherry Shae. And now, the last, the last person who take apart in this meeting, she is one of the very important person in this, in this team, in my team. Because he knows what to do in her job. You know, you notice, when you are deliver your speech, you must know how you, you speak in a proper English, like your, your grammar and your pronunciation and your pronunciation. So we can learn a lot from this woman. Let's welcome our grammarian Titin Ningse from Surabaya, Arek Suroboyo. Okay.
Thank you, GE, Tosmaster Herman. A very happy afternoon. Hello, Tosmasters and guests. I'm very happy to serve as a grammarian today. As a grammarian, it is my responsibility to pay close attention to all the speakers, listening carefully to the language usage. And I'll take note of the outstanding words, quotes, sayings or thoughts. And as a grammarian, it is also my duty to introduce the word of the day. For today's meeting, the word of the day is serendipity. And another one is serendipitous. The first one, serendipity, it is a noun. It means the occurrence and development of events by chance in a happy or beneficial way. It is a moment happens by accident. Usually, when we are doing something that is completely unrelated. Example of the word serendipity in a sentence. Sometimes we stay in a hotel, but often we'll take a chance to quickly, sometimes we stay in a hotel, but often we'll take a chance on serendipity and go somewhere simple. Another word of the day is serendipitous. Serendipitous is an adjective. It means occurring or discovered by chance in a happy or beneficial way. Example of the word serendipitous in a sentence. The comet was thus a serendipitous discovery, but one that quickly overshadowed the results from their main observing program. I will provide my report at the end of the meeting when called upon by the GE. So thank you, back to you, GE, Tosmaster Herman.
Okay, thank you, our grammarian. It's very clear your explanation. Okay, now we start our meeting. I will give to our beautiful angel for today's meeting. As a Tom, Daisy Pinam.
Thank you, Tosmaster Herman Hadilukito from Bali. So ladies and gentlemen, you have known all the role takers. So I think we will have a very good quality meeting today because we are observed by very experienced role takers. Okay, so as I explained before, and thank you for coming, Tosmaster Ali. Ladies and gentlemen, this is our president now, Tosmaster Ali. Okay, and okay, and as I explained before that we have three sessions. The first session is double topic sessions. And today, our double topic sessions will led by Disingisos Master Boy Henry. He is a very dedicated Disingisos Masters, yeah? And we are proud to have him as our member. Thank you, and I give this control to Disingisos Master Boy Henry.
Thank you, Tosmaster, meeting. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Boy Henry and I serve as table topic master for this meeting. As we know, that table topic session is a session that facilitate members to deliver his or her speech without any preparation at all. So speak is a kind of impromptu speech. So I will give you a topic where there is a question or a statement. Then you answer the question or you give your thought, your opinion about the statement in one to two minutes. Before that, I would like to give a little explanation about our team today. As we know that October twenty eighth is commemorated as Youth Plights Day. It was in October twenty eighth, nineteen twenty eight, youth associations all over Indonesia hold the second youth congress. On that day, we remember the history of unity and integrity, which was summarized in the Youth Plights. Indonesian youth originated from all communities and all areas all over Indonesia. They gathered and united the dreams of all Indonesian Youth Association. Indonesian youth fought to have one homeland, one nation and one language, Indonesia. So there were two keywords, two important words regarding with this pledge. They are unity and harmony. So that's why that's become our team today, unity with harmony. And I will have seven table topic speaker. And I have provided seven topics. So you may volunteer yourself to become the table topic speaker. And don't forget, when you deliver your speech, use the word of the day, serendipity and serendipitous. So, um, who would like to be the number one? I have seven topics. Disingisos Master Ibrahim, would like to try?
I love to, thank you. Yes.
Okay, I have seven topic, number one to number seven. Which one do you choose? Number one to number seven?
Number seven. Number seven is my luck.
Number seven?
Yes.
Okay, this one. One less help us defeat COVID nineteen pandemic. One less help us defeat COVID nineteen pandemic.
One less help. COVID nineteen.
One to two minutes.
Thank you. COVID nineteen was a scamdemic. It was not anything else. It is just a bad flu, which has been made worse by human alteration. It can be completely controlled using standard drugs like ivermectin, which is used for scabies and for worms in people. It was absolutely not necessary to have any lockdowns or any vaccinations. The ivermectin can control the COVID nineteen. It is a prophylactic, it will stop people getting the disease. A university of Monash in Melbourne, research the discovery unit, medical discovery unit, found that ivermectin could knock out COVID nineteen in February twenty twenty. And they published their paper in April twenty twenty. In May twenty twenty, there was a control trial in Bangladesh with health workers. And the ones who got ivermectin didn't get COVID. And the ones who got the placebo, sixty percent of them got COVID. In the same month, in May, all the states except Lima in Peru rolled out ivermectin. And the death rate went straight down within a fortnight to the normal death rate. So every country was bamboozled, brainwashed, gaslit. And serendipitous not, was not allowed. The serendipity that allowed ivermectin to be the prophylactic, to stop the disease and to also cure the disease was not allowed in all of the western countries. Only a few countries use the ivermectin. And they were reported in the newspapers. The newspapers were bought by Big Pharma and the governments were bought by Big Pharma. And they really, they stole a trillion dollars at least from the world. I think, I can't see the timer, so I don't know how my time is going.
Yeah. Here's the timer, the yellow one.
Sherry Shae.
Can't see the timer switch. Anyway, I, I think I've said enough. I think it's, I could go on for an hour. Unfortunately, or serendipitously, you gave me a question about which I've been working and I'm an expert on. So I didn't need any preparation. Thank you all. If you need more information about how to get your body clean after the jabs, after the vaccines, I send you some through the email.
Wow, thank you, Tosmaster Ibrahim Champion, wow. So fellow Tosmasters, through this topic, we get different point of view about COVID nineteen pandemic. There is a unique word from Ibrahim Champion. It's not a pandemic, but scamdemic, right? Yeah, yeah, okay. So the point is, whether we are infected by COVID nineteen pandemic, we still have to unite, so we can fight, so we can protect our, ourselves and also our surrounding. I think it's a kind of a good thing, good thought from Ibrahim Champion about this topic. Okay, thank you. Next, would like to be Fireman? Yeah, okay, Daisy. Daisy first, Daisy, okay, Daisy.
No, 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 I mean, I think we should give to our visiting members from Pekanbaru.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, which one? Um, would like try?
Kevin maybe, Kevin Pan.
Kevin? Okay, Kevin. I, I still have number one to number six, which number?
Let's try number five.
Number five, okay. The topic number five is this one. This is the saying, one for all and all for one. One for all and all for one. One to two minutes.
Okay, one for all and all for one. Me and taking it's the same relation to the, to the COVID. I'm trying to, to be, so example, when we faced this COVID for the last two years. And the one thing that was needed by all of the people around the world is the mask. So when we had earlier states of the COVID in twenty twenty, on twenty twenty twenty, the mask is very, was very scarce, was very limited to the people. So, for example, that mask was needed for all of the people around the world, but it's so scarce, so it becomes like, oh, the mask needed for all the people. And now, since the COVID are starting to getting better and the mask production also get, getting better. And now, everyone can buy each of that, or maybe a pack of that to maintain us and protect us from the virus. Even though the coronavirus still out there, but has a less cases around the world, but still those masks are the most important thing that we need to protect ourselves from the coronavirus. I think that's, but thank you very much for this opportunity.
Okay, thank you, wow, good, Kevin. Still regarding with COVID nineteen pandemic. So when at this time, it's very difficult, it's very hard to find face marks. But we need to help one to each other. So by this, we can provide enough face marks to our surrounding or our community. Wow, that's another kind, that is another, another different point of view from Kevin. Thank you, Kevin. So next, I would like to invite our guest, Donna, Donna Sirai. Would you like to try?
Okay.
Donna?
Okay.
Okay, which one, which number? Except number five and number seven?
Number three.
Number three, okay, number three is this. Tell us one unforgettable serendipitous moment. Tell us one unforgettable serendipitous moment.
I don't remember.
When you meet your husband.
By accident, okay.
Oh, by accident, hmm, unforgettable serendipitous moment in my life.
Yes.
Oh, maybe when I took a, took a test for, for I don't remember. Can we skip to another few person first?
You just tell, what, what, what test? What kind of test? And then what happened with the test? Maybe, maybe at that time, you thought that you cannot pass the test, but fortunately, you could pass the test. You passed.
Yes, when I pass my examination for government, for government, when I, when I pass examination from government to, as a super servant.
Yes.
I think I have, I had take the examination one year before, but I didn't pass. And then I tried on that year again, but and when I took it, I, I don't hope that I will pass.
Okay.
Because I think I don't work, I didn't work too hard for, for it. So when the when the pengumuman.
Yeah, announcement.
Yes. So when the announcement come, I, on that time, we should, we should see it in internet, on internet, but I should go to my hometown. In my hometown, I don't, we don't have internet cafe. So my friend told me that I passed the examination. And that, and that, and the time I feel I, I cannot believe it. So she sent me a message from Messenger. On the time we don't have WhatsApp. And I cannot see the, the announcement in the internet.
Yes, okay.
Just be, just by my friend.
Okay.
I think that's the
Okay, thank you, Donna. Donna.
In my life, okay.
That's your unforgettable serendipitous moment. When you pass the government officer recruitment test. Congratulations, Donna, wow.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I saw Swisin, would like to try Swisin?
Yes, I will try.
Okay, Swisin, I still have a fourth topic besides number three, number five, number seven.
Or number four.
Number four, okay. Okay, number four is this one. Okay, what's in, on your mind? What is on your mind when people say good luck? What is on your mind when people say good luck? One to two minutes.
What is on my mind when people say you good luck? Have you ever guessed someone tell you good luck?
Yes.
For me, I have also the yes answer. Allow me to share this story that when I have to teach my students at school and there was a story, which is the kaplunk. It is the sound that a big nut fall into the pond and it makes the sound kaplunk. And one day, while the rabbit is having a nap by a pond, there was a kaplunk sound and the rabbit was scared and he just ran, ran, ran. And he met another friends who are frogs and they say, hey, why are you running? I heard a scary sound kaplunk and they just run again. And they see another friends. And they also, what happened? It, there is a kaplunk sound, everyone ran, ran, ran. And they ran, they flapped. And then, what happened next? Finally, they see a wise animal, who is the lion. The lion asked them, what happened? Why are you running? We make a here, we heard a scary sound. At the time, the lion just say, at the time, and they, he heard a kaplunk sound. Hey, silly animals, it is not the scary sound. It is just a big nut fall. And this is the moment that the lion make them realize that to accept the reality and to inquiry, what is the reality? And don't be afraid of anything. And the lion finally said the sentence was, good luck, animals. So when someone tell you good luck, this means they want you to be the best. They want you to do something right. They want you to be in a great moment. They want you to do something right. They want you to be in a great moments. Yeah, Father Toastmasters, good luck to you all in your life. Back to you, Tima Tropic Master.
Wow, Suisin, our teacher telling us about kaplunk sound, lion, and finally, good luck, they want you to be the best, the right one, the right way. And then, good luck to all of the Toastmasters. Okay, good luck, Suisin. Thank you. Next, uh, would like to try? Pak Herman?
Okay, okay, Fireman, yo. I will, I will choose number one.
Oh, Fireman number one, wait, number one, number one is like this, Fireman. Pak Herman Hadi Lukito, okay.
From Bali.
From Bali, yes. Fireman, how do you experience oneness in your daily life or activities? How do you experience oneness?
Oneness.
In your daily life or activities?
It is. Do you know? I was born long, long time ago. You can predict how old I am. I have, I have three children, the eldest one already thirty-one. In this, it's of course, I have a lot of experience. And all the things, good and bad, and serendip, serendipitous, I can keep in my mind. Uh, one day, my son asked me to send him to go to the hotel. And I asked him, what for you are, uh, you, what for, what, what are you going to do there? And then, see, he said that he want to take a part in scholarship test from Singapore. And it's really serendipity. He passed from that test. And he can continue his study there, me in Singapore. Fellow Toastmaster and guest, this experience, I shared to, I shared to both of you, to all of you. Why? Because in this, in this meeting, there are still young men. So, if you feel disappointed with your life, don't give up. There are many ways to go. You still have a time to create another idea, the positive, the positive one. And you will get what you wish then. Okay, back to our smart TTM, Boy Henry.
Wow, Pak Herman Hadi Lukito from Bali, wow, cool. So, the message is, you will get what you want. And I know that there is a saying said that, like this, Fireman. In his life, you get what you believe. So if you believe that you can achieve this thing, then you will achieve it. If you believe that you can buy this thing, then you can buy it. If you can pass this test, then you can pass it. Okay, thank you.
Good idea, maybe.
I would like to invite our, our, um, guest, Unique. Hello, Unique.
Yanique.
No, sorry, Yanique, Yanique, sorry.
Yanique.
Yeah, hi.
Hi, Yanique, I still have, uh, two, two questions, number two and also number three. Sorry, not number two and number six. Yanique? Hello, Yanique.
I'm in the car, so sorry, I cannot.
Okay, no problem. Just one to two minutes. Number two or number six?
Okay, number, well, I don't like number two or neither number six. Actually, I wanna be number one. But okay, there's an option. Then number two then.
Number two?
Yeah.
Okay, number two. Okay, number two is this one. There is a saying said that seek harmony, not uniformity. Seek harmony, not uniformity. One to two minutes.
In my childhood, I remember when I met very different culture kids. When I was a kid, when I was in elementary, then they came from Batak, Java, and then, uh, Bugis. They're coming from different cultures. So, at that time, I asked my mom, what I don't have the same culture with me? Then that uniformity, or is it gonna be a harmony? Then my mom said, look at the rainbow, look, rainbow is not one color, Niket. It has many colors. So, if you want to have a beautiful day, even though it's after rainy, then that's the thing. Then my mom said also, when you have different friends from different cultures, then your life will be colorful like the rainbow. I, I'm so sorry, at the time I didn't get it, but now I really get it. Look, look at us here. We are coming from different culture, from different nations. I am so glad meeting Toastmaster Ibrahim Champion. I never knew that he used to be in the place where I am now. He used to be here in Toba, and I didn't know that. And thanks to Toastmasters, then I can meet people from other country also. That's it. So, back to you, Tom.
Thank you, Yanique. Wow, great metaphor from Yanique. See the rainbow, so you can see many colors. See your surrounding, see your friends. There are many cultures. And it, it will enrich your views and also it will enhance many things that we can cooperate one to each other. See the rainbow. Thank you, Yanique. Wow. Next, the last one, um, who else that doesn't have any, uh, role? Um, maybe Pak, Pak Sukiman? The last one, Pak Sukiman? Pak Sukiman?
Pak Sukiman Saragi.
Okay, Pak Sukiman, this is the last one for you. Pak Sukiman, okay, your thought on harmonizing different ethnics, different cultures. Is this like the same, yes, than Unique before. Okay, Fireman. If not Fireman, sorry, Pak Sukiman. Your thought on harmonizing different ethnics, different cultures?
Okay, thank you. Uh, why? It's the chance. Different cultures or this for me is just like a different thing in this world about the face or the color only. But the true thing about the friend is inside your heart. But I believe every heart of the people in this world is the same from blood or red. No matter what color you, you in your heart, you are, your face or your eyes is different, of course, we need to be different so we, we know each other. But the most important thing is inside, like those masters. In those masters, we have the same chance. We can be anything in this organization, no matter you come from where. Or even Pak Ibrahim from Australia, Australia, or me from Medan, and we meet in those masters together. And so, different cultures is only to make our life colorful. So we know each other, we can enjoy each other, because everything is the same, it also make you get bored. But the most important thing is inside your heart. Every heart of the people is, must be red one. Thank you, Father.
Wow, thank you, Pak Sukiman Saragi. Different cultures make our life colorful. So that's why we need to have different cultures in our life. By what? By joining Toastmasters. Because we can find many friends from many countries with many cultures and many ethnics. Thank you, Pak Sukiman, for your thought. And by this, I would like to conclude my table topic sessions. In, I think, I think, you know, um, in Toastmasters meeting, there are many great friends from all over the world. We can meet many, not only friends, but also, uh, we can find many cultures from each countries. Moreover, I found this when we run the meeting by Zoom online. Yeah, so it's very easy for Suisin to come to Medan, for Pak Ibrahim to come to Medan, and also friends from any region or any province all over Indonesia to come to Medan. I think this is a serendipity thing for me and for us. You know, we can unite and we can find oneness. That is to practice and hone our communication skills, public speaking skills, and leadership skills. So that's why let's benefit Toastmasters for our oneness. Back to you, Toastmasters of the meeting, Desi.
Wow, let us give round of applause to Disingis Toastmaster Boy Henry. A very good conclusion. Yeah, I think I have, um, some highlights from, uh, Pak Boy Henry's, um, session today. The first is, we all love Toastmasters, you know? Yeah, because if I don't hint Toastmasters, I will not know Pak Disingis Toastmaster Sukiman Saragi. I will not know Toastmaster Herman Hadi Lukito from Bali. I will not know Disingis Toastmaster Boy Henry. And also, I will not know Disingis Toastmaster Ibrahim. So I'm so happy to see a very great people, yes, great people in Toastmasters. And you have to know that we are different here. We come from many cultures, we come from many backgrounds, um, many, um, many colors and many, and different way of thinking. But here, we support each other. And, um, I think this is a very good atmosphere for us. So if you have friends, which is not Toastmasters yet, just ask them to go to enter or to submit themselves to Toastmasters, okay? And I see that we have, we, today we have different point of view about COVID nineteen. This is not pandemic, but this is came to me, okay? Yeah, um, same with you, Disingis Toastmaster Ibrahim. Um, I keep many ivermectin at home. And thank you, until today, I don't use it, yeah. And I hope I will never use it, yeah? And thank you also to Toastmasters Suisin, yeah? Because you, hmm, tell us about, uh, what is good luck. So I think I will say good luck for you to have, uh, to make you, uh, brave to see, uh, to make you brave to see the reality and, um, to hmm, give you very big hope to be, uh, to get great achievement in real life, okay? Okay, um, thank you, that's all. And I think we can go to the next sessions that is prepared speech session.
Uh, before that, Desi, maybe you would like to ask the timer for the.
Okay.
Timer report.
Okay, okay, thank you, Pak Disingis Toastmaster Boy Henry. So now, I will, we want to hear, uh, time, timers report. Toastmasters Charlyce, uh, the control is yours now.
Uh, yeah, thank you, uh, our Tom, Mr. Desi. Yeah, uh, welcome to, uh, the time control report. Uh, may I share the screen? Yeah, okay. Uh, so, uh, here is the timer report. Uh, we have seven speaker from our table topic, uh, speech. Say, uh, and all the speaker is qualified. We can see the speech duration in this. Uh, is my screen visible to you all?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Uh, by, by the way, uh, I think for table topic, one until two minute, right? And yeah, Donna Sirai had three minutes.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, sorry, sorry, I mean, uh, once on, uh, there's, uh, one speaker that's not qualified. Uh, uh, she is, uh, Toastmaster Donna. And the, the others, Toastmaster Ibrahim, Toastmaster Kevin, Toastmaster, how to pronounce your name?
Swae.
Toastmaster Swae, okay, thank you. And Toastmaster Herman, Toastmaster Yanique, and Toastmaster Kerman are qualified and can be fought. Think that's all from my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Toastmasters Charlyce. So ladies and gentlemen, uh, I ask you to make, uh, to choose your favorite speaker from the session. And maybe Ali has made polling or, okay, we can see the polling. So you can choose, uh, one of, uh, one your, your favorite speaker of the session. Okay, I think we all have chose. So we can go to the second session. And second, this second session is for members only. And we will hear or we will listen to our two speakers. And they will, uh, present their prepared speak, their prepared speech. Okay, we have two, uh, speakers today. The first is, let me introduce you. Uh, the spur, the first is, uh, Toastmaster Jennifer Juang. Her title is Away From Comfort Zone, which duration five, uh, seven, four to six minutes. Her pathway is leadership development. And this is level one, project one, icebreaker. And the objectives of this speech is for members to introduce themselves to the club and learn to the basic, learn the basic structure of a public speaking. And she will be evaluated by Toastmaster Suisin. So, Toastmaster Jennifer Juang, are you ready?
Yes.
Yes, okay. This is, uh, ladies and gentlemen, fellow Toastmasters, this is Toastmaster Jennifer Juang with her title, Away From Comfort Zone. Go to you.
Uh, thank you, everyone. Uh, good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Juang. And I am currently working in Air App. And I am very glad, uh, that I am here today to deliver my speech. And so before I start with my speech about comfort zone, I would like to ask all of you, or maybe some of you, uh, to tell me about comfort zone. What is comfort zone to you? Um, maybe anyone would like to share their views about comfort zone? Toastmaster Herman, maybe?
A comforting. Uh, do you know sometime, uh, someone, uh, doesn't realize that, uh, he stay in a comforting? That's why, uh, especially person who work in a one, one, uh, factory and one of these. And he or she only, only thought that this is a comfort zone for, for them. But actually, there is another better position if they, he or she try to look for another factory. That is the comfort zone. Okay, back to Jennifer Juang.
Thank you, Toastmaster Herman. And maybe one more, um, like, what is? And maybe one more, um, like, what is uh, comfort zone to you? Uh, maybe Tasmaster Ibrahim?
Yes, I think to advance, to really get ahead, we have to shake up our comfort zone. We have to challenge ourselves, we have to do hard things, things that are hard. We will never get ahead and get real success if we just sit in our comfort zone. Our comfort zone will take us to an early grave. We will overeat, we will under exercise, we will not challenge our mind, that is our comfort zone. We'll get zombied out by TV. Better turn off the TV, in fact, throw it in the river. Oh, sorry, no, we don't want to do that. But be careful, your comfort zone will sabotage you.
True. Thank you very much, Tasmaster Ibrahim. So from both Tasmaster Herman and Tasmaster Ibrahim, um, we can see the resemblance. And so from as defined in Cambridge Dictionary, comfort zone is a situation which you can, you feel comfortable and in which your uh, ability and determination are not being tested. So it is a situation where we are feeling calm and relaxed. And so examples for comfort zones include only working in the same position for years and years, won't take up challenges from his or her bosses, won't innovate and accomplish projects, not doing speeches during Tasmaster meetings, and there are so many more. But, and I should say that I am not a very confident person. And I get very nervous very easily. Uh, I went into panic mode actually when Tasmaster Billy and my other fellow Tasmasters reminded me about today's speech. And I wasn't even prepared, or I haven't even prepared anything and I didn't know what I was gonna, I was going to share and talk about today. And I actually was about to bail if it was possible and not even do the speech today. But perhaps God said otherwise, and that's why I'm here today with you all and sharing. Um, the feeling of panic and nervousness is maybe because I have been in my comfort zones for so long. I, I haven't done speeches for about a month. And if I did, and when I did it, I didn't feel very satisfied with what I have said or shared in meetings. And then, um, and so I avoided opportunities to speak just because I am not willing to go through uncomfortable situations such as giving speeches like this. And so instead of improving, I became worse uh, in my public speaking skills. And like, as you can see, I'm very nervous right now. Uh, comfort zone is not always bad. It is more like a routine, a safe place where you can relax and not appoint pros and cons of whatever you're doing. It is a challenge for me, uh, to be here actually. And, but I am glad that I'm here because now I can overcome my fears and see new faces, um, such as you guys. And I may or may not feel satisfied with my speech today, but at, at least it is a step for me to, to my long journey and fun journey in Tasmasters. So to conclude being, uh, so to conclude, um, being in a comfort zone is okay. Sometimes your body and mind just needs a bit time to relax and rest. But remember that challenges helps you grow and not the other way. However bad or good the outcome may be, there will always a lesson to learn after whatever challenge you have gone through. Thank you.
Yeah, just give round of applause to our first speaker today, Jennifer Juang.
Thank you.
Wow, Tasmaster Jennifer, I think you have, hmm, defeat your fear, yeah? And this is your first speech and you're, and you give your speech uh, outside of your club, not in your own club. So I think this is also brave, yeah? And your first speech and uh, is better than my first speech, yeah? So don't worry, uh, you have jumped out from your comfort zone and let's have an adventure in Tasmaster. Okay, hmm, so now we have second speaker. Um, our second speaker names is Billy Satrio Wibowo. Uh, his title is Empty Your Glass, with duration five to seven minutes. And his pathway is persuasive influence. Um, he is working on level two project three, introduction to Tasmasters mentoring. His objectives is the, is for the member to clearly define how Tasmasters envision mentoring, for the member to share some aspects of a previous experience as a protege. So, Tasmaster Billy Satrio Wibowo, your turn now.
Glass of water. Can anyone see my glass of water, full of water here? Guys, same, same like ourselves in our life, that sometimes we feel thirsty, right? And when we are thirsty, we drink a glass of water. Sometimes we thirsty for knowledge, sometimes we thirsty for networking, and sometimes we thirsty for something that we never know. And this is the uniqueness of ourselves as a human. We always thirsty and we try to feel full, fulfill, sorry, our glass uh, and then we fulfill the water. It's talking about how I as a human become a glass. When I feel very, very warm drink, I will drinking. It's very delicious. And when talking about a glass, I just remind about myself as an independent glasses that never be mentored before. I believe that in Tasmaster, Tasmaster Jordi is my first mentor in my life. And I am grateful for this. Because as Tasmaster, uh, Jordi Sapta as my first mentor, I learned so many things from him. Actually, there's two important thing that I learned from Tasmaster Jordi Sapta, how he mentoring me and how he coaching me. And for this long, long journey until right now, I believe there's, there's always a strange serendipity when you do mentoring or coaching. For example, in my previous speech, I found something not only what I want to share to others people, but I know there, I found something, it's talking about myself. So this very amazing that I can get the serendipity in the mentoring and coaching. So talking about the experiences, I actually never be mentored before. As a very, very independent person, actually I learned everything by myself. And sometimes I feel failure and I got stuck in some point. But I just keep going by myself and I just break down all of the struggling and I just pass all the things that I cannot pass it by myself, but without mentor. After I met Tasmaster, I feel very, very, very embracing with myself. Why? Because I've, I just realized that I always think that I am perfect. I just think that I am always clever and I just think that I know everything, but actually not. And what is the effect from that? From my experience, I repeat my one point three speeds almost four times. Because what? Because the mentoring session and coaching session. I just don't feel satisfied with my speech. So I repeat again, I repeat again, until I feel satisfied with my speech. So actually, this is a very good things from mentoring. And Tasmaster envision that kind of two things, mentoring and coaching to this community. It's very, very good. And talking about that, it's just remind us that sometimes as a glass, we don't need to think that we already full. Why? Because if we think that we are already full, for example, you think that you are already full and then other people mention something to you. Their people, the people share something to you and you think that you are already full and you don't empty your glass, you fulfill again, fulfill again, and then what happen, you know? The glass is full, but you cannot take another things. Because the glass already full. If you feel thirsty and you drink one glass and that's not enough, you need the second glass. But see this, if you just only pour the water in the same glass, when it's full, it just peel, but it's not fulfill your thirsty. You need to drink it. Empty your glass. For what? To get new knowledge, new networking, something new that you never get before. So from this speech, I just want to mention that please, if you want to become a bigger person, stay hungry, stay foolish, and empty your glass. Bob Sadino, write this Blajar Go Blog, or we call it Learning to be Stupid. Thank you. Back to you, Tom.
Thank you so much, Billy Satrio Wibowo. Wow, let's give round of applause to Billy Satrio Wibowo. Yeah, Tasmaster Billy, yeah, I think we have um, many things in common. I want to be new every day. How to be new? I, I want to get new community, new friends, new books, new film. So I will hmm, give, I will get many waters to my brain, yeah? You know, I'm, hmm, I'm a mom with two daughters, but I will, I, I never feel enough. I want to learn, learn, and learn more. And now I learn from you, Tasmaster Billy Satrio Wibowo. So thank you so much for all, um, for our two speakers today. And I think for ending this um, sessions, I will hear or listen to timers report. Tasmaster Sheeh, the control is yours.
Uh, yeah, thank you again, Tasmaster Desi. And here we go to um, timer report for the two paper speaker. Tasmaster, um, Jennifer, uh, and Tasmaster Billy. Um, uh, so here is the, uh, the time duration. For Tasmaster Jennifer, your time is six minute and twenty, twenty uh, second. You're qualified. And for Tasmaster Billy, your time is uh, six uh, minutes with four, uh, four seconds. You're also qualified. And I'm so sorry, uh, for Tasmaster Billy, I uh, time, time issue, so I didn't uh, show the time indication, but you're qualified. I think that's all from my report, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, but we have to know more about the duration of Satrio, Tasmaster Billy, yeah?
Yes.
Uh, her, his duration is.
Five until seven.
What?
Five until seven.
Five until seven, okay, okay, okay. It means that you are also qualified. So I encourage you and our, I invite you to choose your favorite by using polling. So where's the poll? Okay, let's uh, let's vote, yeah? Okay, thank you, um, for the polling. And now we go to the last session, we call it evaluation session. This is, at this session, we will learn many things from evaluator. And today we have two evaluators. The first is Tasmaster Suesin and the second is Tasmaster Sarah. So, Tasmaster Suesin, the screen is yours.
Hello, Desi, that is belong to my job.
Okay, sorry, long time has, it has been long time not be uh, Tasmaster of meeting, okay, okay. So I give the control to you, yeah, Tasmaster Herman Hadidikito, so sorry.
Okay then, hello all, now a time for us for taking picture. Okay, who will take the picture? Desi?
I know.
And then after, after, after taking picture and then we proceed to the, the session, the last session.
Maybe Tasmaster Ali?
Ali Gia Bangun.
Because I have no, I haven't got the application to take picture. Tasmaster Ali, maybe you?
Okay. Uh, Tasmaster Boy Henry, where are you?
Please, you are still muted, Tasmaster Ali, maybe Ali, Tasmaster Ali want to take out the picture, okay?
No, 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 we, we, we are waiting for Tasmaster Boy Henry. Hello, Tasmaster Bjorn, Boy Henry. Charlie Sheeh also. Okay, Tasmaster Sarah. How are you?
Maulida.
Please be exist.
Maulida.
Show your face, show your beautiful and handsome face, Tasmaster Maulida.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, let's, one, two, three, cheese. Once more, once, once again, one, two, three, cheese. Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I already take this sitting shot.
Uh, by the way, Desi, here in a evaluator, uh, there are three evaluators, right? And if what the one and two, and Sarah will evaluate as a table topic evaluator, right, Sarah?
No, um, in Medan first, we still have uh, evaluator for the speaker, not double topic evaluator. And um, um, previously, uh, I me as the speaker one, but I cancelled and I be the Tom, and the speaker is, uh, the speaker are only two. Uh, the, and we have only two evaluators also. We don't have double topic evaluator.
Oh, yeah, and then for the evaluator.
The first one is Tasmaster Suesin and the second Tasmaster Sarah.
Okay, everybody, now is my turn to lead the, the third session. Is the last session for the meeting. And here this, we can learn how to be a good evaluator for this session. And now, for the first speaker, Billy Satrio Wibowo. Sampeyan jenenge jowo, tapi wonge wonge Medan, okay? Billy.
Pekan baru Pak.
Uh, pekan baru ya?
Pekan baru.
Yeah, sebat, he was born in Medan. Will evaluated by a beautiful angel from Myanmar. But Tasmaster Suesin, okay?
Where one, you are wrong, supposed to be Jennifer Juang. Billy is my evaluator, not Suesin.
But here, you know, you know, in, in my session, there is a, if what the one Suesin, if what the two is.
I'm speaker two, but I just, I just speak before.
Oh.
Yeah, maybe you have
But but here in in this list is uh Billy Satrio. So okay then, now Billy will evaluated by by Sarah then. Okay, Swayin, sorry, sorry. I beg your pardon. So now, the evaluator, a beautiful lady and also one of the beautiful angel from Pekanbaru.
Where, where not me? I haven't finished writing the evaluation.
So, I'm confused. Daisy, how?
So I think, uh yeah, Jennifer Joang is the first speaker and she will be evaluated by Toastmaster Swayin. And and now is uh Toastmaster Swayin's turn. Yeah.
Jennifer, Jennifer Joang, right? Okay then. Okay, please, beautiful angel from Myanmar.
Thank you so much, our general evaluator, uh Pak Herman Lukido from Bali. So everyone, please try to congratulate our speaker one, Toastmaster.
Which Jennifer.
Toastmaster Jennifer, let's give a generous applause. Why we give her a generous applause for three beautiful things in her speech? The first one, I'm so proud to share them. Our speaker one who delivered this expert speech and she met the purpose of this project. It is the expert of the speech to know more about her and to introduce the public speaking. And she just like share us the purpose of this. So we knew that uh she just uh shared everything was the public speaking, she started with the in the international. She asked the question to the audience and she took up to what is the comfort zone? And then after that question, she move on to the body parts and she share her experience how she uh she is trying to get out of her comfort zone and she give us example, not delivering the speeches in Toastmaster. And then how we couldn't, uh we are enjoying like even every uh times in one job for a long time, something like this. So I really love how you shared the examples of your life experience in the body parts. And then in the end also, she just like give a very strong message to the audience that these challenges, these things, we are in the comfort zone, these are the things that helping us to grow when we are uh getting out of this comfort zone. That's really great uh stretcher. I love it. First introduction with the questions and then in the body, the examples of comfort zone and how you overcome it in the end. So that's a really great speech. Although you didn't prepare it, it was amazing. So I am so surprised that if you prepare your speech fully, it would be really, really amazing. The second one is the clarity. We could follow her every sentence that her clarity, her spoken language was so uh the sentence was short and clear and also effective. So the clarity was amazing. So I love it. And yeah, the third one is you met the project purpose in your speech. So that's really great. We could know more about you, how you get out of your comfort zone and your journey and the courage that to start your journey again in Toastmaster. All the best. And here, I just say only one little suggestion, which is you were sitting uh close with the camera, so we could only see your head and this part only. So uh if you could stay like this with your upper part of the body and then if you could use your hand gestures effectively, like for example, get out of your comfort zone, something like this. So it would be really uh adding the values to your speech. So all in all, I love it, the clarity, how you met the purpose of the speech and then the structure of the speech. So please walk on and challenge yourself to use more hand gestures. So congratulations, all the best to your Toastmaster Jenny and amazing things are waiting for you. That back to you, our general evaluator.
Thank you, our beautiful angel from Myanmar, Toastmaster Swayin. Now, the speaker of the the empty your bottle will evaluated by a beautiful woman from Pekanbaru. Let's welcome our evaluator, the second evaluator, Toastmaster Sarah. Will evaluate Billy Satrio Wibowo.
Thank you so much, our general evaluator, Toastmaster Herman. So Toastmaster Billy, it's my first time watching your speech and I was amazed with the way you demonstrate that mentoring is similar to empty your glass. That we are as a human being, we're never perfect and we need always to refill our glass, which is our brain and our heart for sure. Toastmaster Billy, what I love about your speech is first, you per you fulfill the purpose of the speech. Where at the speech, you shared a bit of your experience as a protege and you also mentioned Toastmaster Jordi as your first ever mention in your life. It also showed the appreciation to Toastmaster Jordi. Unfortunately, he wasn't here to at to witness that kind of appreciation. Number two, the content is relevant to the project, especially the message that you say to all of us being stay foolish, empty your glass. Those are sort messages but relevant and stick to our mind. Until now, I still remember the whole speech of yours. Number three, the delivery, no hiccup, especially in signal. In my point, I didn't see any hiccup in 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 terms of the signal. And also, I love the clarity in terms of the delivery. I love the clarity of your voice volume, your word selection, simple word, you don't use the messy and fuzzy words. And I also love the props when you refill the glass and you try to drink up all all the water. I hope you're not feeling something bad today because you drank a lot of water at, you know, a very short time. So I love those three things, the fulfill the uh you fulfill the the speech proposed, the content is relevant and and also the delivery. I love the word uh selection, the power, and also the props. If I may give you the feedback for your further speech, number one is the content. As much as I love the relevance of your content and it fits with the purpose, I observe that it only touch the surface. How can I say that? When you say that, when you mentioned about you're thirsty, we don't, we didn't get, I didn't get what kind of thirsty you felt at that time. You mentioned a bit about you need to repeat a project for four times because you don't feel very satisfied with that project. So that that's where Jordi help you. You didn't mention what makes you didn't feel satisfied with that. And you didn't mention in what kind Jordi's help has to help you. I mean, uh did did he help you in terms of the delivery? Did he set aside time to coach you and something else? So you can dig more and you can show us more about your experience as the protege with Jordi as your mentor. That's number one. Number two is the structure. The structure is a bit back and forth. So we start with the opening, right? I love your questions and I love when you uh engage with the audience about mentoring a glass of water. And in the middle, you can discuss more about your experience, your struggling, and then you said that you never start you are independent learner, so you never ask for someone else mentoring. But then you can dig more about that in the body. And then at the end, you can discuss about stay foolish, stay hungry and everything. So I think it may be better if you try to structureize more about your speech, so we are not like confusing uh back and forth. Okay, I I thought that Billy has already reached the end of the speech, then you go back again to the body of the speech. Those two things I may give for your further speech. I hope I can witness another wonderful speech of yours. That's all from me. Back to our general evaluator, Toastmaster Herman.
Wow, it's very cute, evaluator, evaluation. Thank you, our beautiful angel from Tanbaru, Sarah. And now we have finished the third session, the last session. Now is the time for the our timer to give the report for our evaluator. Okay, please share me as a timer.
Uh yes, sorry. Uh thank you, Toastmaster uh our G E. So uh for our uh evaluator, Toastmaster Sway and Toastmaster um Sarah, uh your time is uh first for Toastmaster Sway, your time is three minutes and seven second, you're qualified. And for Toastmaster Sarah, your time is three minutes and thirty seconds. It's just nice and you're also qualified. Uh and that's all from my report. Thank you.
Okay. Uh please, Bella Konta, Ali, Ali Bangun Gia, give the the list. Okay then. Okay, I'll finish, yeah. Uh thank you for the uh for all the best evaluator for this meeting. This is the last session that you you fulfill the the meetings uh for today's. And now there is also young, a beautiful angel will give her report as a counter. This angel coming from Pekanbaru. Actually, she is from Bali as well. Let's welcome our angel for Ahkon, please give your report.
Angel. Thank you, Toastmaster Herman. Okay, here's the and uh my report from unnecessary words during our meeting today. So Toastmaster Kevin, three A and one M. Toastmaster Donna, three A, one M and two R. Uh Toastmaster Jennifer, two A and three M. Toastmaster Sh- Shu- Shusin, two A. Uh Toastmaster Sarah, one A and reasonable none. This are my report for today's meeting session. Back to you, our G E, Toastmaster Herman.
I'm Lukido from Bali. Don't forget to mention the complete name of mine. Okay, Angel, thank you. You are so beautiful and young and smart. Because your father also handsome. Okay, uh that's all uh from Ahkon the angel. And now, we we are really lucky. We know how to talk and to pronounce in a good English, in a proper English. That's why there is someone do her job as a grammarian. So now, everybody, please give your focus to her, our beautiful grammarian, Titi Nengse from Surabaya, Arek Surabaya. Okay.
Thank you, G E, Toastmaster Herman. Good afternoon, fellow Toastmasters. It's a pleasure listening to your speeches. And now I would like to point out some of the words that can be improved. For example, the first one that I get here, our table topics sessions will led by my suggestion will be our table topic session will be led by because this is a passive voice, we use a verb tree and then before the verb tree, we use be, will be. Will be led by someone, this person. Next, the second one, I had take the examination. My suggestion will be I had taken the examination because had it will be followed by verb tree as it is in past perfect tense, had taken. Now the next one, we thirsty. Okay, because in an English sentence, we need a verb or if there is no verb like this sentence, then we can put the auxiliary verb that is to be, is, am, are, was, were, or been. So here we can say we are thirsty. Because thirsty is an adjective. Next one from the grammatical uh improvement is I feel very embarrassing. My suggestion will be I feel very embraced, not embracing because embracing uh means I'm causing this embrace feeling. While this one, it means that I am uh embraced. I feel very embraced. Not me as the cause of this feeling, but I feel this feeling. I feel very embraced with edy instead of with ing. Next one, it does not fulfill your thirsty. Fulfill, it will be followed by a noun. Okay, so my suggestion will be it does not fulfill your thirst. Yeah, thirst is a noun instead of adjective. Fulfill what fulfill, it will be followed by a noun, thirst. Next one, what kind of thirsty? So this will be the same like in number five. What kind of thirst, of will be followed by a noun, that is thirst instead of thirsty. And I do find wonderful quotes before that. Uh we will see how many times the word of the day, serendipity and serendipitous were mentioned. Toastmaster Ibrahim mentioned the word of the day twice, three times. DTM Boy Henry, three times. Toastmaster Herman mentioned the word of the day twice. And then Toastmaster Billy mentioned the word of the day twice as well. Apologize for any word of the day that I missed. And I do find some wonderful quotes and sayings that I would like to share with you. The first one is from Toastmaster Ibrahim. Scam the mic. From DTM Boy Henry, unite so that we can fight. From Toastmaster Swayin, good luck is to wish someone well and successful. From Toastmaster Herman, don't be afraid, you will get what you want. From DTM Boy Henry, in this life, you get what you believe. From Toastmaster Yanike, if you have different friends from different cultures, your life will be colorful. From Toastmaster Sukiman, different cultures make our lives beautiful. Another one from Toastmaster Ibrahim, to get ahead, we have to challenge ourselves. Another one from Toastmaster Ibrahim, be careful, your comfort zone will sabotage you. From Toastmaster Jennifer, challenges will help you grow. From Toastmaster Daisy, defeat your fear. From Toastmaster Billy, we have to put imagine yourself as an empty glass so that we are open for learning. Another one from him, stay hungry, stay foolish and empty your glass. From Toastmaster Sarah, we as human beings are not perfect and we need to always fill up our glass. So this all coming from me as the grammarian's report this afternoon. Thank you and over to you, our G E, Toastmaster Herman Hadi Lukito.
Okay, thank you, our grammarian. It's really clear, your what you explain, your explanation really uh meaning for us for tonight meeting. And we are lucky having you as our grammarian. Now is my turn to evaluate the meeting. And the meeting only a little bit uh late, only ten minutes. So I remind Daisy because uh another another role taker didn't join yet, so she she give uh a time, ten minutes. And thank you and I hope for for all the role taker uh next time, please be on time so we can finish early then. And for today's meeting, especially maiden first, this is the best meeting. And for today's meeting, especially Medan First, this is the best meeting, regular meeting that you have. Usually in your meeting, I only have two colors, black and white. Now I have a rainbow in your meeting.
Don't say that, Pak. It's only from your point of view, yeah?
I, I, I mentioned this to, to make address, uh, who, who join in this meeting will join again. Okay, we are thank you for Toastmaster Ibrahim champion. Because we haven't meet each other quite long time, right? Like maybe twenty years, yeah? Twenty years maybe. And also, thank you also, uh, Toastmaster Titi. You, 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 you join as a grammarian. And also for both, uh, for the speaker, Billy and also for our guest Kevin. And this is, uh, this is the nice, a nice moment that we have and we can mingle for many, many, uh, part of the world and then united in a one screen. And yeah, we are lucky here and thank you for joining. And I always join with the Medan First regular meeting because I always invited by the beautiful lady Daisy. I hope you can, you can make another, uh, best, uh, meeting like, like today and you increase. I hope you can make until forty participant. Wow, it will be amazing. Uh Daisy, I really appreciate.
We believe.
And don't disappointed. Life always go like a water. And yeah, the destination of the water is ocean, it's very wide and then you can see many people there. Okay, thank you all and I am glad to, to be your G E in this meeting. And I give back to our Tom for your, 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 your time to lead the, the, the last session of the meeting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Toastmaster Herman Hadi Lukito. And I think before we close this meeting, I believe that we learn much, yeah, from this meeting. Yeah, we learned much from Toastmaster Titi Nengsi, how to say something in English. And we learned much from everyone with our, both of our followers, that was Swesin and Toastmaster Sarah. Yeah, no, no, we have, now I'm someone, right?
Yes.
Okay, your turn, your turn.
Yeah, okay, now a time for us to know who is the, the best, mean, uh, the winner from each session. And that now, uh, we'll announce the, our handsome ballot contender. Now, who is our position?
And Sam and Stinga.
Yes, for table topic speaker. Are you ready, our ballot, Ali Bangun Gia?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. The winner is.
Sessin. Our table topic.
The first, the position.
Sessin.
Yeah, Swesin. Yes. And, and then, where is the certificate?
Oh, I had prepared the certificate.
Huh?
I already prepared Sessin.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Sessin.
And how, how to share screen? Should I share, share screen? How to share screen?
There, there's about participant chat shares a screen. You just click shares a screen and you go to the PowerPoint slides.
Share screen. Share, share screen, yeah. Under below. Ah, good. Okay, take a picture, what's Sessin?
Eh, wait, eh. How to say, how to? Okay.
Okay, Sessin.
Yeah.
Okay. Eh. Sessin.
Yes, I, yeah, I'm posting. Okay, is it finished?
One, two, yeah. Okay. That is our favorite and the best for table topic session. Now for the prepare speech session, the favorite is.
Billy.
Billy. Show, 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 yo, yo.
How?
Yeah, you show your certificate, Ali.
Wait, I.
Again, share for the screen. Like, like Sessin said, yeah.
Share, share screen.
Yeah, Billy, favorite, three best with Billy.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, okay, take a picture, not yet.
How to take? Sure.
Huh?
We will take this picture. I.
Okay. And, yeah, yeah, maybe Daisy can help. Yeah, okay, Daisy, take a picture for Billy Satrio Webo.
Um, I cannot, uh, maybe, uh.
I can, I can.
Okay.
I can help.
Okay, okay.
I, I.
Okay, one, two.
Two.
Okay, done.
Thank you, Angel. Uh, now for the last favorite. Evalators. Is. Ali Bangun Gia is favorite.
Sarah.
Sarah, okay, show your certificate. This one, okay, Sarah, where are you, Sarah?
Hi, Toastmaster Herman.
Yeah, we are, we are going to take your picture then. We are going to take your beautiful face.
Okay, I will count. One, two, three, cheese. Okay, one, thank you.
Is Sessin already take the picture? I think if not, you can take the picture for Swesin.
Sure. Maybe Sessin can open your camera already? Okay.
Yeah, already.
Sessin, once again.
I repeat.
One, two, three.
Wait, not yet, not yet. Still Sarah.
Oh, yeah.
Still Sarah, wait. Thanks to. First, first slide, Bang Ali, Toastmaster Ali.
Ali, yeah, yeah.
One, two, three, kimchi.
Kimchi.
Okay, finish. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, that's all our, our meeting for today because we face, uh, we have faced, we have faced the, all the winner for every session, okay? Back to our Tom.
Yeah, thank you, Toastmaster Herman Hadi Lukito from Bali. Yes, we have witnessed the winners of today, every session of today. So congratulations to you all, Toastmasters Swesins, who always be the winner. And also Toastmaster Sarah, who always be the winners also. Okay, and before us closing this meeting, I think this meeting will be closed, um, by our president. And I think I want to know, I want to get feedback from the Toastmaster, this thing is Toastmaster Ibrahim first.
Wow, I was blown away. I just had amazing meeting. Thank you Daisy for inviting me and making me so welcome. I also want to congratulate the Zoom host because he did such a great job of running the Zoom. We should never forget, the Zoom man is very important in these meetings. So we should always give him a, a little shout, a shout out. Yeah, thank you. I, I, Putu, Putu, thank you. You were great. I really appreciate the great work you did. And everybody else and the way you had such a great collection from Myanmar to, uh, Australia. Everywhere in between. Thank you very much, Daisy. I love the meeting. And I'll talk to you later. Maybe we can organize, um, something about a, a sister club in Australia.
Yeah, of course. We happy to have a sister club. And I hope you, you will be active also in Medan First, right? Toastmaster Ibrahim, so we have, um, new members.
Yes, I'm so happy to see a, a few old souls that I remember like Saragi and, uh, the lovely G E, yeah.
Yeah, and maybe you remember the father of Toastmaster Ali Gia, yeah?
Yes.
And this is his son.
Where is Kuno Gia now?
Do Ali like his father?
Yeah, a bit like his father. Yeah.
Okay, and I want to get feedback from, um, Toastmaster Kevin Fan. How are you, Toastmaster Kevin Fan?
Yeah, I'm fine. Thank you, Toastmaster Daisy. Yeah, so, yeah, today is a great meeting. Uh, this is my first time visiting Medan First. And I surprised that Medan First has many visiting members from one of the Toastmasters Club. And I think it's a very good thing to bring a more vibrant, uh, vibrant feeling to the clubs. So make it the great club meetings, make it interesting for others, especially the guests, yeah? The guests and non-Toastmaster members. Yeah, we see more great meetings in the future. Thank you. Take to Toastmaster Daisy.
Yeah, thank you, Toastmaster Kevin Fan. And I hope we, the member of Medan First will also come to Riau Club, yeah? To visit, uh, Toastmaster Kevin Fan Clubs. And, hmm, okay, I think, um, my duty is enough.
Ibrahim, how did you know this meeting?
How did I know?
Yes.
Uh, I, I looked up Medan First to see if it was still functioning because I have a, a debt to Medan First. Uh, the, the debt is because of Medan First, I was able to get my DTM.
Oh, you are not DTM, yeah?
And I, I had not reported to you that I got my DTM. And so I contacted Daisy on the internet. And, uh, yeah, I'm going to become a, I'm going to rejoin Medan First as.
Oh, good.
Uh, I'm, I'll still stay a member of Frankston, which is, Frankston is one of the top clubs in the, uh, district where we are. We, we won the club, uh, best club in the district award a couple of years ago. And we're still right at the top now. So we have a very good club here. And I, I wanted, I wanted to see how the club was functioning because I'd like to suggest that we make it a, Medan, a sister club of Frankston. So I could probably get that too.
Because Medan First, uh, starting, uh, the meeting, uh, four o'clock in the afternoon. So in your, in your time around, around eight o'clock, right?
That's right. It starts at eight o'clock. Yeah, which is a good time for us. Very good time.
Okay, so you are asleep, right?
It, it, it's summertime, so it's eight o'clock now. In winter, it will be seven o'clock.
Hmm, yeah, okay. Yeah, uh, and, uh, for your information, maybe we will get many members from Akasapuraya, Pak. Toastmaster, this is Toastmaster Putu. Yeah. I hope Medan First will be bigger. Okay, I will give this control, control to our president, Toastmaster Ali. And he, maybe we will listen to his speech, um, for a minute before closing this meeting. Okay, thank you, Toastmaster. I'm sign out as a, as your Tom today and I give control to Toastmaster Ali.
Okay, thank you, Tom, uh, for leading this meeting. Uh, I would say my present very big thanks to all of you, especially for member of Medan First Toastmasters who has prepared this meeting. And yeah, I say very, this is very a good meeting. And you are prepared this meeting very well. And thank you so much also for, uh, the, uh, our fellow members from other club who attend this meeting. And, uh, I would like to announce that our next meeting will be on the fifth of November. And we will conduct, uh, we will try to conduct the hybrid meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Hybrid, hybrid meeting.
Oh, what, what, November? Uh, fifth November.
November.
Oh.
A hybrid meeting, so we will try to, uh, arrange the hybrid meeting on the fifth of November. So if you are, uh, interested to come, uh, let us know if you want to take a role taker. For example, like to be a Tom, uh, and speaker for fifth of November. Does anybody want to, uh, to register the name?
Not yet, lah.
Uh, by the way, uh, we, uh, already, uh, at the end of our meeting. So I think, think, I, I think I should say, uh, thank you to you. And I, uh, for this, I officially close this meeting. Thank you so much for being on coming and I hope we can see you on, uh, next week.
Yeah, see you next week and I hope I will see you again. Thank you, Toastmaster Putu. As our.
We'll contact Putu, Desi.
Thank you, Desi. We forget Putu, yeah? Yeah. Thank you, Toastmaster Sarah. See you again and I will come to your club.
Thank you, thank you.
Bye. See you, Yanka.
Nice.
Bye.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, take care, take care because you are, um, on your car, in your car. Take care.
Okay, bye.
Hello, Donna, Donna, hi. Donna, have you registered again, prolonged your membership in Toastmasters?
Not yet.
And if you want to prolong, just go to Medan First, yeah? Because daily, maybe daily not active again, right? But Putu.
They try to.
Uh.
Oh, they try to conduct meeting also, yeah? They still try to conduct meetings?
Yes.
Uh, Donna. Uh, Donna, Donna, maybe, maybe if you want to prolong your membership. Uh, better tomorrow at before November. I heard that the, the, the fee will increase because the US dollar is increased. Going to, uh, sixteen maybe, rubia per one.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, if there is, if there is Delhi meetings, it means that you, yeah, you better prolong in Delhi, not in November. I thought Delhi is not exist again, but if Delhi is still exists, yeah, I suggest you to, to prolong in Delhi. How about your husband?
I will ask.
Yeah, give my best regards for him, yeah?
Okay, thank you.
And today, Ali want to say something, yeah? Or Toastmaster Putu wants to say something to this, to Medan First, yeah? Hello. And this is Toastmaster Ibrahim. Yeah, Medan First has a few members.
That's good.
Maybe.
Yeah, you, yeah, you know that eight is borderline and five you actually drop out of Toastmasters. So you've got to be, try and keep that at, uh, above eight. So that's very good if you've got thirteen, is that right, thirteen, did you say?
No, we only have maybe about six, six members, yeah, not, not even eight.
Okay, so only, only, only six members. Oh, yeah, so, so plus one from Ibrahim, so you get, uh, nine then.
Yes, and I'll, I'll, I'll also, when I get some money, I'll send you some money to make, uh, uh, Dasina, Nina, to be a member also.
Oh, your wife, yeah?
Yeah, you remember her, we, we had the meetings in the cafe, we had it, uh, long time ago.
Okay, may I get her number, so I will contact her.
Okay, I'll send you them, I'll send you her number, yeah.
Okay.
You, you, I think you are from Indonesia, yeah, Ibrahim, yeah?
From Aceh.
Oh, from Aceh, yeah, 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 I remember, you married with Indonesian woman.
Yeah, that's right.
And she is still in Aceh now or go with you?
Yes, she's in Tapak Tuhan at the moment.
Okay, yeah.
No, she is still in Aceh, but Tapak Tuhan, Tapak Tuhan, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, I will contact her.
The giant footprint, yeah, I'll, I'll send you the, the link, Desi, okay?
Oh, yeah. Okay, goodbye, everybody.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Herman.
Yeah.
I will contact you again and again.
Okay, thank you, Herman, you.
By, by, by the way, when, when you, you, when you hold the hybrid meeting, sometime you have a problem with your speaker. So, so I cannot hear, you, you may, you may take it over.
Yeah, it depends on the place, yeah? I think we, we, we try, uh, call Stephen's place in the Skandar Muda. But you know, if you want, if you plan to have a hybrid meeting. And I asked who will come onsite, there are only two, me and Toastmaster Ali. So if only two of us will come, yeah, it's so hard to make him.
You can't have, you can't have a good hybrid meeting with only two people, that's.
Yeah, also, also, it's better for this time being, you, you online maybe. Because, uh, Toastmaster Ibrahim cannot join.
Oh, yeah, we have two, we have members that, uh, not in Medan. Uh, Angel, Angel is in Cikarang, Jakarta. So we only have two options, hybrid meeting or online meeting. So we will not, uh, we will not, we will, we cannot make an onsite meeting, full onsite meeting, we cannot.
With only six members, you, you just have to keep on doing the, uh, the.
Online meeting.
Online meeting for the start and have to have a focus on membership. So maybe you should have a focus on, one of your meetings should, very soon meeting should be focusing on membership drive. How to.
Yeah. It's so hard to find.
Money, yeah, you will waste your money. Because you must pay rent the room for, for Stephen. I think for this time being, because, uh, lack of membership, better, better you, you, you do online, yeah.
Yeah, for the time being.
But we need to meet, meet, yeah, because I have many pins, yeah? That, that's, I should deliver to our members. And I still, I don't deliver it yet. Deliver them yet, yeah, many pins from Toastmasters.
Yeah, so, okay, daddy, good, maybe, good night. We'll talk about it, yeah, thank you for everybody, thank you for making.
Okay, Toastmaster Ibrahim, I will call you, I will contact you always, yeah? And I hope you register to be one of Medan First members.
Yes, yes, I, next week we'll organize it, okay?
Okay, yeah. And Donna, bye bye, and Donna, yeah, if there is no meeting in Delhi, you can come to Medan First, yeah? Um, and I will always contact you. And if there is no, if Delhi is not like exist again, I don't know, yeah? Yeah, I hope all the members from Delhi will, who still want to join Toastmasters, go to Medan First. Okay, yeah, but I hope Delhi is still exist, yeah, I hope. Okay, thank you. Okay, see you again and Ali, we are, I want to sign out. Okay, Donna, bye, see you again, Donna, yo, dada.